...into one person and it never really got shared so that people could look at best practices across all areas. So that's one of our big website things we're working on. The second part of the website is external to the public, to students, to the community, to all faculty. We want to be able to share what we're doing. We want people to see what our learning outcomes are and how well we're accomplishing that. So that's, we are in the process of, I think we have a meeting next week with our IT department again, to start to build all of those things so that our communication with what our assessment is and how we're accomplishing our goals is shared. Because I think it's really important that everybody knows that, what things we do and how well our students learn.
So Cindy started to talk about is our Higher Learning Commission Assessment Academy project. And three years ago when we began, it was a communications project. We felt that in order for us to be more successful in assessment, we need to communicate better to faculty, to students, and so on. As this has evolved, our work has grown in many different ways. And it developed to go beyond a communications project, but more of a cultural transformation project. So Cindy started to talk about one of the aspects in our cultural transformation, we think of it in three ways. Number one, community. And so in our website, both internal and external, we hope to be able to communicate better. Another way that we've approached community is by going to advisory committees and talking about our institutional learning outcomes with advisory committee members. Asking them, are these valuable when our students, if you're a four-year school, if our students go on to your four-year institution? Or if our students go to an occupation? How do students use these, apply these institutional learning outcomes when they go to you as an employer? We're getting a really wonderful amount of data from these advisory committees. So that when we, in a few years, or I'm not sure what year we will be up to doing that , Debbie, when we revisit our institutional learning outcomes, we can say, well, we value written communication, but more importantly, our four-year partners value it, and our occupation, our employers value it, excuse me. So that's community. A second major focus in this cultural transformation has been helping faculty understand that, this is kind of my slogan, and it comes from Nasser Beydun, who's a math teacher, "Assessment isn't about me. We're not evaluating teachers when we do assessment, it's for me." It helps me do a deeper exploration of what my students are learning and not learning, so that it informs me to do a better job of teaching, finding other strategies to teach so that our students do a better job. For addressing faculty, we've had many conferences for the past three years. And this past year, we had two Higher Learning Commission scholars, Susan Hatfield and Susan Murphy, come and work with us on helping us develop, helping faculty develop assessment strategies, data gathering strategies, and looking at data analysis. Along with that, Cindy, Debbie, and I have been working intensely with faculty, meeting with them one-on-one, to talk about their programs, talk about how institutional learning outcomes are integrated into their programs, so that there's a closer tie to each faculty member. And we're finding that this one-on-one approach, as was recommended by Higher Learning Commission, is really bringing people along and helping them understand that assessment is about student learning. Finally, well, not finally, two more things, CTI staff sessions. So we partnered with the Center for Teaching Excellence and Innovation, and two of our faculty numbers have had CTI sessions to inform faculty about written and oral communication and critical thinking. So here we're reaching out again in another way. Finally, on May 7th, we had an assessment day. A day where we invited faculty who had gathered data to come and sit at tables according to their institutional learning outcome, and share with people from other disciplines what they were learning about their student learning in that, that outcome. As an example, so I'm a math teacher. In quantitative literacy, we had a number of faculty from accounting, from computer technology, from, I'm forgetting, other areas where they talked about what were their students doing well, and where were they falling short? And so the math teachers are taking that information back and saying, okay, what can we do, not only in our courses, but what resources can we provide other instructors and other disciplines to shore up those math activities, so that when the students go to apply the abilities, they do it with greater success? The next aspect of cultural transformation is student understanding, student knowledge of institutional learning outcomes. Our last visit in 2015, the visiting team found that our students really didn't know what gen ed outcomes were. And now we have different language, what's an institutional learning outcome? So in this next year, we're, we have a team of us who are developing posters that we're going to be putting in classrooms, in counseling sessions, in advising offices, so that the idea of institutional learning outcome is going to be part of their vocabulary. We also have Sandra Flucker from Student Activities gathered a group of students who were talking about ILOs and how ILOs helped them in subsequent courses, and they've done some videotaping. So we're going to be using those videotapes again to inform students. We're also encouraging faculty to talk about ILOs. So I teach math for elementary teachers. Well, that's about math, but teaching is about communication. You have to be able to write mathematics, you have to be able to speak mathematics, you have to be able to communicate with your students, with parents, and with other professionals. So we're having those conversations and asking faculty to integrate the language of institutional learning outcomes in their courses.
So our next steps, we've collected data, we've analyzed that data, and now we're implementing some actions to improve student learning. And we're doing this in our programs and in our institutional learning areas. In the co-curricular area, same type thing. So for Student Activities, we've identified some projects, we've collected data, and we've put some action plans in place. As co-chairs, we are responsible for coordinating these assessment activities, and we're gathering support for the Higher Learning Commission accreditation visit that we anticipate in 2019. The story that we have to tell between where we were the last time the Higher Learning Commission visited us and where we are today is a drastic, very, very significant, very exciting change. As you heard Cindy say, we now have some stability in our process. We are changing the process, people are getting more and more comfortable, we have simplified our reporting, and we have a nice progression, we'd like to think, that is level loaded, although we continue to get faculty feedback to make sure that it's not being burdensome. We're seeing some real positive results in terms of student learning and improvement in a number of areas across our curriculum. So we're very excited with the changes that have been happening the last couple of years. So now is an opportunity for you to ask questions of us.
I'm interested in how this relates to the strategic plan. I see the Higher Learning Commission is motivating us to do this kind of work, which is critical work. But how does this fit with the strategic plan?
Well, as you know, student learning is a top part of strategic plan, and really data, and I know people like to use the word "data-driven," we really like to do data informed. So what we make changes, that there are actually important things that comes out of a sustainable assessment process, so that this is what's going to lead to changes that we know will have work in our working, as opposed to just guessing and throwing in a dashboard and hoping we achieve that. So it really goes to the first one of the strategic plan, which is student success.
We were just going to say, it is actually 1A.
Okay.
So you can't get more to the top of strategic plan than 1A.
Well, no, I appreciate that, because I think when the Higher Learning Commission comes, they're going to look at the strategic plan, then they're going to look and see what we're doing. So I'm just glad we have the universal look. Anybody else on, trustee Lang?
Just out of curiosity, when reading the last minutes, I noticed, I mean, we had the Integrated Energy Management, and I really appreciated that they thought of ways to teach that as well, making this college an important educator for future energy uses. The present presentation about applying Dr. Rader's political science to Lansing, I mean, it's all good. I just am curious if there are areas, I mean, I would think that most disciplines would have a practical tie, but I wonder if there are areas that are more challenging for you to find co-curricular activities that will put the learning into daily life? Philosophy, maybe? I don't know. Math? Math, I would have thought, I mean, and math is, in many ways, so practical.
Right. So I think every discipline looks for the opportunity to do experiential learning, and more importantly, to try to get to what's called authentic assessment. So authentic assessment might be, rather than giving the students a comprehensive or standardized final exam in a business course that's about how to start a business. You put them on the first floor of this building, you press the elevator button, and they have until the time they get to the fourth floor to give you their pitch. So it's something that's real life that they have to experience, and they do. So the faculty in each of the areas are, of course, the ones who are responsible for deciding how they will go about assessing the outcomes that are related to their programs. Most of the co-curriculum assessment that we're doing is not necessarily related to a course, but it's representative of the kinds of things that students do outside of classes on this campus. So here we're interested in service learning opportunities, the work that something like the Muslim Student Association might actually do, and to say, how do students learn when they participate in that kind of activity? And what does that teach them about social and individual responsibility?
So are there areas where that is difficult to find the practical evidence of the learning?
If, I almost looked to the faculty in the room, and I would say, not really.
No.
No, no, but we're, in fact, some of the work that we're doing with co-curricular, by the information, the feedback that we've gotten from the HLC, is actually far ahead of where most schools really are, because we're looking specifically at those kinds of opportunities. So co-ops, internships, and, you know, I would hope that we get to a place, especially in the occupational fields, where every occupational field that we have, and every pathway would include a co-op, and so they'd all have those experiences. So we're kind of naturally going in that direction. I would imagine, if I just had to throw one out there, it's, people are not that excited about playing around with the quantitative reasoning part.
Well, I don't think we've had any trouble getting programs to give data for those things. They're realizing how much, and a paramedic uses math, it's pretty involved, and you don't think about it when you think of it, you think of it, they're healthier. But I, so I don't think, once we sit down with people, they're not having difficulty coming up with information they use in their courses or in their classroom.
Trustee President's call?
Okay. I'm trying to understand how all of this is going to look. Because in the end, I guess what we're talking about here is being able to report this out some way to the community at large and our student body, and internally share it with. What are we going to be actually seeing? You know, when I think about assessment, I go directly to data. You know, that's our traditional understanding, you know, you're going to assess, and you're going to assign some kind of parameters and numbers to it. But that's not what I'm really hearing here of how, of what we're really looking to report out. So what are we going to see in the end game on the website, so to speak? And how are we going to determine what its value is?
Okay. This requires sort of a translation of the data into a story about learning, and sort of what does that mean, and what does that look like? And so in these reports that we've been talking to you about in an annual report, we have an opportunity for faculty to share student strengths, their weaknesses, and then their suggestions of actions they might take to improve student learning. And so they're sort of weaving that story in there. And these stories, these actions that are being taken, it's a paragraph or two of changes that they might make in a particular, in a particular course, or with an exercise, or with an assignment that's being added, additional practice activities. So in the curricular areas, these are the kinds of things that are happening. In co-curricular areas, think about the ability of students to self-advocate for themselves, to be able to go through a process like registration and have some support initially, but the second time they go through, they're completely capable now of handling the steps, of going through that process on their own. And so that's documented in a little story. So these are going to be stories that you're going to be seeing. The reports that we're doing are one page, that's one piece of paper, front and back, with that critical information. We're also going to be summarizing some highlights, so you'll be able to see some of the really wonderful things that we've done in various programs to improve student learning. So we have a very rich, very good story to share with the Higher Learning Commission.
I'm going to assume that this is voluntary reporting, and, well, my concern is, is that we have a lot of adjunct faculty who change over time, and how are we going to have them understand this process when, you know, they're not here all the time, and you're not accessing them all the time? And so whose story are we really going to be hearing? Are we going to be hearing the same voices, or are we going to get a well-blended conversation?
So I can speak a lot about math. What we've done in math, Nala Haydar is the institutional learning outcome rep, and I have been meeting one-on-one. So in the evenings, adjuncts who might be teaching calculus, or pre-calculus, or other courses, we first sent out an email saying that we were going to be doing this assessment, and these were three key ideas in, I'm going to take calculus as an example. These are three critical skills that students need to learn in calculus I, to be successful in calculus II and calculus III. We got emails back from adjuncts saying, "I'd like to talk to you about this, can you give me some examples?" In our email, we also said, "Would you gather data from your classes, from a test, or from an act, from an assignment, or from a final exam, to tell us how successful your students are in this?" Again, the adjunct said, "Well, can you provide us some examples?" So they weren't at all objecting to do it, but they wanted examples of test questions that they could use. And we made it very clear, this is an example. If you have something similar you prefer, but these are the skills that we would like you to assess for us. We received very positive feedback from those adjuncts. When we are working with our developmental committee, we, the first year, excuse me, we gathered data on beginning algebra and intermediate algebra, and we identified five key topics in those courses that were important for students to learn well there, so that they could apply them in their subsequent courses. The full-time faculty and adjuncts were invited to share with us. We provided a binder, about an inch and a half binder, of activities that we use, that we were sharing with all faculty teaching math 80, okay? People reported back to us that they were using the activities, they found them very helpful. We gathered data last year, we're going to be gathering data again this year to see if there's been any impact. And then the, I believe, Jan, oh, Janice isn't here, there's Janice. I think the math department is going to be having a semester kickoff in August, the first day of class. Is that right? Yeah, okay, that's right. And what we're going to be doing there is asking people who are going to be teaching beginning algebra in one room, intermediate algebra in another room, share with them what we've learned, okay? And ask for their input, what can we be doing better? And what, how, what kind of data collection do you think is most valuable? So those semester kickoffs, what we have in August, are so very valuable because we have the opportunity to have some time with our adjuncts, to talk with them about what's happening. Another example is criminal justice. Dan Kearney is the lead faculty for, I'm not sure if that's the right word, but he's the guy in charge of criminal justice. And he has a very detailed five-year plan, and a number of adjuncts are gathering data for him. So last year, they gathered data on two things. In the law course, and it's an adjunct who teaches the law course, they gathered data on students being able to take a fact pattern and write a brief from that fact pattern. So from that, number one, we could assess the program learning outcome that students can take those fact patterns and write a brief from it, that was a program learning outcome. But then we also could grab data on written communication. How is the writing? So we found that there were some gaps in the writing, okay? And this was all data reported from this adjunct faculty. And so we thought about an action plan for this year, where we're going to ask faculty to have an initial writing activity, so they'll have a fact pattern, and they'll have to develop a brief. The instructor will review that and highlight any shortcomings in the writing part of it, and then refer students to the writing lab that was just launched, I think, on March 15. Then later in the semester, they'll have a similar assignment, and we're hoping that we can see growth, not only in the students being able to take that data and synthesize it to a brief, but also a development of the writing skills.
That gives me a clearer picture then of how this is going to work.
And I understand that all of the programs work with the adjuncts within that program, and so when they develop that whole mapping of what courses contribute to each one of the program learning outcomes, they're going to gather the data, and that becomes one-on-one meeting with the program leads and work with the adjuncts that teach in that area. We are also going to meet with the president of the adjunct union to help figure out how we can get to maybe those that we haven't been able to reach. So we are reaching out to make sure that we get all of their voices.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next items, discussion items. First one is millage renewal, board number 4442, Interim President.
Thank you. Thank you. Information that was sent to you last week, and also, most of it is in your packet tonight. There's a PowerPoint presentation entitled "Millage Renewal," and then there's also a separate document that has all kinds of chart numbers and lines on it, which I refer to as ACS, ACS data, which is information we get from the state of Michigan. It's called the Activities Classification Structure, ACS. It takes all of the information from all of the community colleges and prepares approximately 40 to 50 different tables and graphs showing expenditures per full-time student, revenues per full-time student, property taxes, number of mills, et cetera, et cetera. And what I'm going to do is that, this is the document that is in a PDF file, I'm going to send you the full document at this point, next, at some point this week, but I'm only on the documents that were sent last week. I have about four or five different pages in there, which are the support for the Millage Renewal PowerPoint, which we're, which I want to go through. So if you have questions on it, stop me, and I can refer to the document in the handout that is separate from the PowerPoint. So on the first slide, and I'm going to have my Vanna White over there, in terms of Kevin Color is going to do.
He's not in his.
Doing the slides for me. The first one we pulled together just shows fiscal 2017 information, and we've seen this a few times in some of the other presentations. But it shows the total revenue per full-time equivalent student that colleges receive or have in the state of Michigan. You'll see Henry Ford will always be to the far, far right, we're just a little over $9,000, $9,200 to be $9,621 in 2017. Again, that's on this chart here that you may not have in front of you because it was sent out last week. To, all the way up to when you look at Wayne County Community College District, that they're at almost, they're at $16,182 per student. So again, keep those numbers in mind, where we're at a little over $9,400, they're at over $16,000. And you can see some of our closer community colleges fall in the same category, Schoolcraft, Oakland, Washtenaw, Monroe, and the statewide average as well. On the second PowerPoint presentation, we take a look at total expenditures. First one, talking about revenues, talking about expenditures. Well, if you get $9,400 in revenues, that's pretty much what you're going to be having available, and then some to spend in the coming year. And that bears itself out where Henry Ford is, right there between $9,000 and $10,000 per full-time student. Wayne County up at $14,000, Monroe up at $14,000, then you see Schoolcraft, Oakland, and Washtenaw, statewide average a little bit over $11,000. So then, on the third one, here we're looking at property tax revenue per full-time equivalent student. You can barely see our chart there because by far, we're one of the smallest districts when it comes to state equalized value, when you start comparing yourself to the rest of Wayne County, and Oakland County, and Washtenaw, and Monroe. Schoolcraft is, you know, over twice as much as what we are as well, and they're in Wayne County. So it gets to show you what we generate by property taxes locally from our local citizens and supportive, like the support of the college. And then the next one strictly shows raw data, raw property tax revenue. And you can see that we're a little bit over, you know, around the 14, $15 million range of the far right. And Monroe is saying, oh, well, Monroe is about the same, 14, $15 million. But you have to remember, Monroe is about a quarter the size of what Henry Ford is. So they get $14 million for a little over $2,200 full-time equivalent students. We have same amount for 9,200 full-time, full-time equivalent students. And you can see, of course, what the, what the other property tax revenue is. Oakland is significant at $80 million, Wayne County is just over $70 million. And I want to bear in mind too, that one of the problems with the SEV is that when you look at Wayne County generating $70 million, they're levying that on a little over three mills, about three and a quarter mills. We're currently at four, and we're generating just a little over 15, $15,200,000 for a little bit more millage from our, from our sedentary, which we are very thankful for. The next slide shows what the one mill is equal to, and I just put a few examples in here to show you how, what kind of effect this has on our budget. One mill is equivalent to around $4,200,000. If our in-district tuition rates weren't $96 like they are today, but we're closer to the state average of 110.28, that's about a million and a half dollar difference. That means our local folks, our local in-district students are saving, paying about a million and a half dollars less, and if we, and which is fortunate that we're not doing this. and a half dollars less, and if we, and which is fortunate that we're not doing this, close to the average rate for community college for credit hours within the state of Michigan. Breaking that down a little further, it saves Dearborn Public Schools through the dual enrollment program, right around $321,000, and it saves all other in-district students who are not in the dual enrollment program, there are a number of them in Fortson, a number at the other high schools that are taking the in-district classes, saves them to the tune of a million, almost a million-two. That still would leave us, if unfortunately, you know, if we did something with tuition, we still would be $2.7 million short of that $4.2 million for the one mill. And I think the next two slides bear some time. The blue bars, as you can see, going back to 2006, and I concentrate primarily when you get to 2009, which is the high watermark, $14,552,000 generated by three mills back in 2009. When the recession time hit, you can see what happened in 2010, we dropped from $14,500 to a little over $13 million, down to $12 million, down to $10,707,000, down to $10,276, and then, finally, in 2014, the low water, the low point of $10,201,000, or a loss over that period of time of over $4.2 million. The 2015 went up, took us up to $13,909,000, almost $14,000, because that was the first year that the additional mill was put on the ballot, or was put into the budget. So, again, you look at 2015 and compare it to 2009, it's still over $600,000 less with four mills compared to three mills. You keep going to 2016, 2017, 2018, and you see that '17 and '18 have some, you know, I'll say, help me with that, Kathy, what color is that? Pink or?
Salmon.
Salmon, there you go, salmon. That, at that point in 2018, when you include the personal property tax reimbursement, we are almost at where we were in 2009, still below the $14,552,000 that three mills generated, but now, four mills is generating a little, a little around $14,500,000, close to it. What does that meant to the, what does that mean for the local taxpayer? Well, the next slide, we used an example here of an $80,000 home with $40,000 taxable value on it for three mills in 2009. That home, at the $80,000 state equalized value, would have generated the 40,000 that's taxable times three, or $120 in local property tax. What happened to that home in '10, '11, '12, '13, and '14 was that the taxable value on that?